...nine hundred council chambers. Uh, is there any late items coming forward today? Hearing none, this agenda will be adopted by consensus. Moving us into delegations, the Okanagan Regional Library, Stephanie Hall, please.
Thank you, your worship. Put this on. Hi, so thank you for your time this morning. I know that local government are some of the busiest people on the planet, so I'll try to be brief and not take too long. I had the chance to come and visit with your CAO Barry in the summer, and I'm very grateful for the time that I was able to spend with him and with other CAOs around the valley. I learned a lot in my first few months from, from talking to them and hearing about the concerns around the, around the valley. And I know that Osue's had some serious concerns about, um, the way that we, uh, funded the O R L. And we'll talk a little bit about the model there as well. Is this how I do? Oh. So the presentation is really simple and basic. We start off with a, an overview of our services, our financial model, what's new, and then about a financial allocation model report we had done by Grant Thornton, which was in part inspired by Osue's concerns. So just talking a little bit about the Osue's branch. In 2012, um, your circulation went down by about two and a third percent. And that was lower than the overall decrease in, this is physical circulation, of about 3.27% for the region. But across the region, we saw a huge increase in our electronic circulation, over 200%. So when you take those two things together, we actually had a net increase of about a quarter of a percent of circulation in 2012. Looking at your program attendance, that increased in 2012. And we also saw an increase in your summer reading program attendance. And if we were able to look forward to 2013, that increased even more dramatically. I think it was about a 75% increase from 2012 to 2013. And the reason we care about Summer Reading Club is that what it does is it helps kids retain their skills over the summer. If they don't read or do anything kind of intellectual over the summer, they can lose months of progress and come back in September and not be where they were when they left off in May. Or June, sorry. Obviously, I don't have kids. So just some data about your cardholders and the visits.
Excuse me, Stephanie, that system-wide electronic circulation, that's people ordering online and receiving it in that manner? Or is it electronic books or is it?
That's right. It's, uh, people downloading electronic books, electronic audiobooks, music, and magazines, basically. Anything that's like a circulation would be for a physical item, we count that as a circulation electronically. But if somebody uses our databases, like we have a database for, um, auto repair or small engine repair, we don't count that as a circulation because they're kind of just reading an article online. It's not like they're borrowing something. So that's the logic we use to sort of define what's an electronic circulation.
Thank you.
Okay. So here, this is the same information about the, uh, region as a whole. That, um, you can see this red line, and that's our print circulation. You can see that it's still higher. Ooh, ooh. I'm sorry. I'm no Vanawite, we'll just say that. So you can see it's still higher than it was in 20, 2008, but we're seeing a kind of a dip from where it was in 2011. But the green line shows the physical circulation and the electronic circulation together, and you can see that it's increasing slightly. And you can also sort of see the proportion where we've got 3.2 million circulations that are still physical items. And I think a lot of people are projecting forward 10 years into the future and say, oh, it's all going to be electronic. Well, right now, our bread and butter is still physical items, so it's kind of interesting. This is just looking at the same numbers a different way. So looking at per capita, did our circulation for each person in the region go up? Yes, it did. And then looking at our circulation per volume held, does each of our items that we own work harder for us now than it did in 2008? And yes, it does, so. So just a patron story about somebody finding a job through the library. So why do we care if people read? Librarians love statistics, and we would love to bore you with it for hours, but sometimes people want a little bit of context. So reading to your children from the age of zero to six improves their brain development. There's a lot of research showing about how quickly kids develop at that age. So parents that read with their children are going to have, children that come into school with thousands of hours of pre-reading experience, and those kids are going to do better when they come into school. They can track them through to grade three, they do better again. And it goes out throughout the life, and we've talked about Summer Reading Club. So there's an individual benefit to libraries and literacy. But in addition, there's a, uh, community net benefit to literacy programming. So we know that family literacy interventions, for example, reduce the dependence on, dependence on the social safety net. Moving into the adult years, we know that four in 10 Canadians lack the fundamental literacy skills needed for job mobility. And we know that people are changing jobs much more frequently and throughout their lives than they would have 50 years ago. We also know that higher literacy is associated with higher earnings, higher levels of employment, uh, greater health, and more, uh, activity within the community, so more volunteering and more community involvement. So the library has roles beyond literacy. We're an expected and appreciated cultural and community hub. We help in attracting people to communities and retaining spouses sometimes. If there's a, a community that has a kind of a one-industry town and the spouse is tagging along, they need something to do. So there's a whole bunch of, uh, roles that we also play. And we'd like to have a greater role in some, such as economic development. We're sort of feeling our way, how can we be more valuable to people in that area? So looking at our financial models, I think you guys are well aware of this, probably more than many communities, but I'll just go over the basics. We calculate our levies based one half on population and one half on land values. And of course, in Osue's, with your high land values, this is an issue for you. Costs are shared among all municipalities and regional districts. And branch service levels are then based on user population, so the municipality and the surrounding population from the R D O S. Looking at the O R L as a whole, local government contribution is 8% below the provincial average. So that's 2011 numbers, and that was the most recent one that we had comparable stuff for, for this presentation. If we take out, O R L spends a lot of money on facilities and capital. We fully, we pay market rents and we fully declare everything we pay. Many communities may get something in kind and they're not fully reflecting it in their statements, or it may, it may not really flow through their books, it may flow through the municipalities' books. So if you remove that comparator, the O R L is actually 27% below the average for our expenditures in all the other categories. It's really facilities and expended, facilities and capital expenditures that sort of drives us up a little bit. By being a member of the Okanagan Regional Library, you have access to three-quarters of a million physical items, so far greater than you could expect in a smaller town. You have a robust array of e-collections. You have a support team of professional librarians and other, uh, staffs, such as accounting and H R. And we also have a presence, a national and provincial presence at policy tables. So just another customer story about being in a small town but having the access to the resources of a larger town. So I talked a little bit about our electronic resources. So these are just an example of some of the ones that we have. So we have ebooks, we have, uh, power speak languages, so if you're traveling to Mexico or Cuba, you can learn your Spanish before you go. We have Zineo, which is magazines, so things like Harvard Business Review, Consumer Reports, National Geographic, and so on. And we also have downloadable music, um, so everybody in Osue's can download up to three songs a week, and they're theirs to keep. One Click Digital is an audiobook service. And a lot of people who drive long distances like to listen to it in their car, or you might be doing housework or something, and you just want something playing in the background, you don't want to hold a book. So those are increasingly popular as well. So these are just some screenshots of the music interface for our free music downloads. Our magazine service again, Zineo. So the next piece I wanted to talk to you particularly about was the financial allocation model analysis we had done. The O R L hired an independent group, Grant Thornton, who are internationally known auditors, to take a look just at the basic question of, are people getting out in terms of service expenditures what they put in? So it didn't look at quality of service or how many circulations or anything like that. It was just looking at the dollars to say, you're contributing this much, are you getting that much spent on you? So we, overall, we received this report, it was done very quickly. We received it in October. We evaluated it, and we felt it was a fair analysis. It's available on our website under our About, About Us section, so you can read the report in its entirety. And I can forward that link after the presentation if you like. These are just some of our key messages, and you all have a copy of this. So just the, the important piece of it was that the whole board acknowledged that they wanted equity for the, for everybody. So everybody was in support of doing this study, and now the piece is going to be implementing it over time. We have a partnership that's been going on for 75 years, and in some places, the expenditures and the inputs are out of alignment. We're going to have to align them, but we're not going to be able to do it in a single year. It's going to take a little bit longer in some cases. So these are some explanatory things about, about what the study, um, some of the factors of the study. And I could go into more detail if there's questions about it. They looked at how we assign our service populations, they upheld our model, um, and they did, gave us a number of scenarios of how we could allocate our centralized costs, so. One of the things we found was that there are, um, different levels of alignment. So we have some areas where the costs and the expenditures are pretty close, like Kelowna, Sicamoose, Vernon, in 2011. This is a snapshot of 2011. Some where we're a little farther out, so Osue's, you being in red means that you're underserved. The ones in black are overserved. We have some that are farther, West Kelowna is kind of our top priority because they are really out of alignment, and it's hard to defend that. We need to do something for them. We then have this area here, some of our smaller branches, and also Salmon Arm, where there's a big correction needed. And that's where we have to say, we need to do this over a couple of years or, or a little bit longer than a single year. So looking at the, um, Osue's findings, and again, this is a snapshot from 2011. These numbers include the provincial, uh, support as well. We just kind of combined it to simplify the display. We had the in, inputs from Osue's, the inputs from the R D O S. And taking all of that into consideration, you were about $24,000 underserved in 2011? So we need to address that through, um, improved service. So we would like to understand more about Osue's and how, if we're going to invest a little bit more in your library, what's going to be strategic for you, what's actually going to make a difference? It's not always the case that it's just more hours. One of the things we're doing across the region in 2014 is that we're introducing adult programming. When I looked at your Osue's, um, programming information, I didn't see very much adult programming at all. So that's an area where you've got a fair number of seniors here, people who would be interested in us expanding what we do for that segment of the population. So one of the things we want to understand is, oh, it just decided to go on its own. Sorry. How can we, uh, help you and what's important to your community? So what we're looking for is any contact people that you think that we should be in, in touch with. We have an area librarian, Georgia McKay, who's responsible for the southern branches. She can work with Kathy Burton to develop a plan for the coming year. And just how in general can the Okanagan Regional Library be a better partner to you? So if you have any questions, I'm here, open to hearing them.
I'm, I'm sure there'll be a few. And you're welcome to have a seat there if you want, or if you prefer to stand, and have that chair there if you'd like. Yeah, thank you very, very much for that presentation. And, uh, I'm, I'm approaching nine years on council. And I guess one of my complaints is that we've had this issue for nine years. We're overpaying and, and under-resourced. So I really want to thank you, and I understand you're, that you're the news executive director of that, what is your title?
I think the board would like me to be called the chief executive officer.
Okay.
Because it reminds them of C, they're all local government, so C A O, C E O is easy.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
So, so thank you for that.
Okay.
But, so, and thank you for what you're doing with this, but this has been a long time coming. And you know, when you get a bit of a bitter taste in your mouth, it takes a while for it to go away.
Yeah.
It, the, the first, the first piece of sugar you put in doesn't really solve the problem. So when, when, when we look at these numbers, and I, and I, I live on this. And, you know, there's, there's, um, there's quite a bit of disparity between the communities. And I understand that's not your problem, but, you know, it is your problem. Both of those statements. And, and I, I really hope that, that, that this new kick and you, you being in charge can, can really initiate some change. Because we need change. We, we really do need, need some change here. And as you were talking, I was, my mind was wandering a little bit, not much, but a little bit into perhaps parcel taxes or something like that, where, because we just keep getting hit on assessment. And you know, our seniors that lived here for 30 years, they haven't gained anything on the real estate values that have gone up. So when we're paying $52, $51.70 per capita, um, that's a huge outlay for these folks. And, uh, when you see that, and, again, they, they didn't, they didn't come here and buy high and all those sort of things. They just lived here on fixed incomes, paying, paying these big rates. And when I look at all the other communities, we're, we're the second one on here.
Yes, that's true.
And I, I just, you know, that, I, I have issue with that.
I hear that, and I, I, the board, part of the report, if you look at that report, that I'll send you the link, part of the report did talk about moving to a population-only, uh, model. It doesn't solve, like, just from my sort of regional point of view, it doesn't necessarily solve our issues in all locations. So, um, my first focus in terms of this report was to say, okay, whatever you're putting in, however we do that, and that's a board decision, um, I want to make sure you're getting that amount out. So that was sort of my first thought, was just, whatever happens with our model, and, and they, the board can change it. It's not lightly done. Every council needs to kind of wrestle with it, and I think we need a two-thirds majority of all the councils.
Sure.
To support it. But even without that, what my goal right now is, is to make sure that we come into alignment so that, yeah, I think Osue's now is paying $49. I think it, it came down to about about $4,000 this year.
Right.
But even if, even though that is quite high in terms of per capita, I want to make sure at least you're getting that much money out of the service. That's the first hurdle. And then the way that we assess, um, taxation is a bigger issue for the board to deal with. But I'm trying to get them to kind of look at one piece at a time and first get some equity. So, but I, I can bring back your comments, and I have done at the board table, mentioned what I've heard from you and from Barry and Sue, who we're very thankful to have on our board, um, from the summer and onwards. So I definitely hear you, that's what I can see.
And we're not looking for, we just want the lowest, but we want, we, I want to be able to have a sense of fairness. And then that's fine.
Yeah, exactly.
If it's, if it's a fair system, and it's a fair assessment, and we're paying a fair amount, that's, that's what it is.
And to, towards that, one of the things that the board, we brought to the board, and the boards agreed to, is that we should do this study every year ourselves internally now, because we have the model, we know how the auditors did it. It can be part of our reporting, so then you'll be able to see each year what's happening. Now, this was 2011. We're now in, going to be in 2014. So that'll, to me, once we have our 2013 audited numbers, that'll be really our starting place to see how, um, how it panned out in 2013.
And again, thank you profusely for this model. I, I think you, I think you've got a, a good building block and the start of something that we can do on some sort of schedule basis. Counsel, please, Counsel McCourt.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Stephanie and Michelle, for coming. And, um, I just need to say that Stephanie has been on, she was hired last year, or a year ago, and she started in February. And Michelle started in the summer. So, you know, uh, they've done a fabulous job of picking up what was necessary, dealing with a 25-member board, which is difficult at the best of times. And I, I must say that Stephanie has picked this up and, uh, and run with it, and she has a great relationship with the board, which is good, and also with the staff that are up there. So I do think we're on the right track. Definitely, everybody at the board table knows Osue's concerns, because it's brought up often specifically, um, about what we pay. And so I think that we stopped talking about this, this, uh, this was put to the forefront and done quickly. So, uh, thank you very much for continuing to work hard and doing what, uh, doing everything in such short order.
Thank you, Sue.
Counsel, Counsel Ryan?
Yes, well, yeah, Stephanie, I, I'll just echo that. Having been, um, the representative for the Town of Osue's in the past, and now the second to, to Sue McCourt, I, um, you know, I know this has been something that has, has been an issue for us, and I think for others as well. So, uh, certainly I commend you for that. I guess, um, you know, when we, um, when we look at our, our activities here, and we, we have a, a sort of a small, but dedicated, um, Friends of the Library group as well, we inevitably start looking around at other communities, and we, and we look at Oliver, for example. And, and, you know, we see, uh, a kind of a vibrancy there, uh, that we don't have in our, in our branch. And, um, so I hope that the plan that you're talking about will receive, you know, a lot of support and, and so on from, uh, you know, the area librarian, as well as from the, the head office staff. Because I do think we need to kind of almost reimagine the branch, you know, and, and really get a good, a good look at, um, at what, what the needs of the community are. And you're right about adult programming. And there's some of the adult programming I know was, was undertaken a couple of years ago by Friends of the Library. They did a little seminar on how to use, how to download and how to, how to utilize ebooks and so on with all your e-readers. So, uh, but, but, you know, there's, there, there needs to be a, a lot more, uh, as I say, vibrancy, I think, to, uh, to the programming and to the activities.
I think that's a very fair comment. We were just recently looking at a comparison of all the different adult programming that already exists. And in the south, Oliver and Summerland are far ahead of anyone else. In, in Osue's, there was almost none in recent years. So I definitely think there's a long way to go. Oliver, in terms of this financial allocation model report, they are receiving more service than they're paying in for, so that's going to be another conversation. And we're going to be meeting with both, um, Oliver and then returning to the R D O S table in this, in the early January, February. So there's some conversations we need to have there as well. And we don't want to stifle what's going well, because you're right, there's a wonderful vibrancy coming out of Oliver. But we'd like to see a little bit more of that here as well, so I think that's a very astute comment. Thank you.
Counsel Paul?
Uh, and just going, I guess, a little bit further with that, we had a meeting with the high school, and, uh, just looking at some of the numbers over the last 10 years, uh, and, and how we can actually bring, um, some of these amenities to people that are thinking about, uh, moving here, how we can bring that vibrancy to bringing families to this area. How can the kids use this, how, use this spot to, to advance, whether that's their education or, or continued education, furthering their education? So there was some of that brought up as well, that we talked about, how do we? So, uh, the library to me is one of those, one of those spots, one of those amenities that we could, you know, that I'd like to see us, uh, to work on, but also it to become the vibrancy that we talk about. But not just for, uh, for our adults, uh, for sure. I still want to make sure that we're focusing on that connection with the schools and, and the programs that are happening in those schools. Again, we just saw some of the statistics as, as far as enrollment, um, and maybe this is another one of those, uh, that we could, that we could work on.
Great, Counsel.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Paul. Counsel Rhodes?
Thanks, uh, well, thanks for coming out, I really appreciate it. Just in case you're wondering, I think you've doubled my knowledge about, uh, libraries in our community. I certainly share a lot of the sentiments that the mayor, uh, uh, kind of reiterated a little bit earlier regarding the numbers and that kind of things. So I won't go over that at all, but, uh, I'm very curious about the, the demographics and, and who is actually using our libraries. Is it young people, middle-aged, older folks, uh, or do you even have the statistics?
Well, I'm sad that our statistics are very kind of limited in what, what I can tell you. Um, we have strong usership from, we know from what's borrowed, well, so we know we have strong usership in terms of our, our children's collections. We're hoping to move to a new computer system in the, in the spring, or late spring, maybe, of next year. And then this will allow us to gather better statistics. Our current one is quite old. So I'm a little disappointed about my knowledge about exactly who is using it. So I can come back to you, though, with some more specific knowledge about Osue's and, and kind of what the profile of, of what's going out. Um, and then I can also tell you a breakdown, I did bring it, but I, um, of what kind of cards. Are they adults, are they youth? But that's not the kind of breakdown you're, you're looking for more specific, and that's what we want to get to so that we understand our users a little better. So I'll send you, I can send the council an email with whatever data I have. If that, sorry that I can't just off the top of my head tell you exactly, but.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I think that's, you know, a, a pretty valuable information to have, because it helps you target programs in a community, and it also helps you avoid, you know, uh, introducing programs that may not be meaningful in the community and that kind of thing. And, um, yeah, so I'd be interested in seeing that, if you gather that information, and, uh, yeah, so that's, that's all I needed. So, thanks for coming.
Thank you. And I think the other piece is that we will try to be in contact with you so also that we understand the community and we're not duplicating things, because you may have stuff going on. You may have a great senior center that's doing computer instruction or something like that. We don't want to reinvent the wheel, we'll do something different. There's tons of need out there, and we are not here to step on anyone's toes, we just want to provide a better service, so.
Mr. Remankel?
Hi, Stephanie, just, uh, one question, maybe you can help clarify, because I know it's, uh, an issue that, that's been at the table is, could you just clarify the relationship to what we pay, uh, uh, as compared to the, the capital projects that happen in the region? Like, we've seen a number of new libraries built, and, and just for clarification, how does, you know, do, is any of the town's money going to those projects? How are those, those libraries built and funded and, uh?
Yes, I can speak to that. So, for example, the Vernon Library, we received, um, a mortgage through, uh, the Municipal Finance Authority. Central Okanagan Regional District helped us do that. So we received some great rates there. So it's basically like a mortgage every year that we're paying. And I believe everybody, every community in, when we own a building, we only own three, I think. We've got Okanagan Falls, our headquarters building, and now Vernon. So when we own a building, everybody owns a piece of that, because you're all paying into the Okanagan Regional Library. But in terms of the analysis, like the financial allocation model analysis, that's broken out by community to say, okay, what's the mortgage on the Vernon? I can make sure with Dawn that what I'm telling you is absolutely correct, that's our financial officer. But I think that all of the costs for the Vernon mortgage would be allocated to Vernon in terms of seeing, does it come out correctly? So, but let me check with Dawn, I, I'm sad he's not here to jump in, but.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll email that as well.
Thank you, because I think it's, I think it's important that people know that if there is a building, that a brand-new building in another community, that that community is actually paying for that building, uh, as opposed to, to other communities holding a, a piece of another building in another community.
But I do think that there is some shared costing around the region. Like, so, for example, when they did the snapshot of Osue's in 2011, there's $25,000 that you're underserved. And that's going to all different things within the region. So that's where we have to realign it so that you're not underserved. But some piece of that, I think that the thinking is that when we own a building, everybody partakes in owning that. Like, our headquarters building, Osue's, in, in a sense, owns a piece of that.
Yeah, I think, I think a headquarters building is one, is one issue, but a, an actual program service building would, could be another issue. I, I, you know, just looking at what the regional district has done, I think they've done some, some great work in terms of cost allocations over the last few years that have made municipalities feel a lot better about what individual communities pay into the larger systems. So I don't know if you've looked at those at all or not.
But we can, and we can also follow up with you to find out.
Yep.
What, what it is you like about how they've done it and so on. I know there's different models with regional libraries. So Fraser Valley has a model where the communities provide the building. And so it actually looks like their levies are. And so it actually looks like their levies are great, way better than ours, because they're not reflecting any of that capital expense, or facilities. So each community just simply provides the building, and then the library provides the service. So of the three regional libraries in the province, each of us has a different model. I think Vancouver Islands is becoming much more similar to ours. Because one of the things that we have found is that, depending on the market, sometimes it makes a lot more sense to own than to lease. So for example, our Okanagan Falls building, we now own it outright, and we're saving money on it every year, rather than paying the market lease rates that we normally pay. So there's different models, and we're certainly happy to talk to you about what you think might be better than the current one.
And any change to your funding model is challenged by, in fact, your funding model is provincially directed through legislation?
Our model, our funding model is, is the default model that's laid out in the legislation. But the legislation also allows for us to change it if everyone thinks something else would be more fair. It's just that, it's, as I said before, it's not lightly undertaken, it needs, I think, two-thirds of the councils need to approve it. So we need to, if we did want to move to that, we'd have to have general agreement at the board table, and then we'd have to launch kind of like a communications campaign to every council to ensure that everyone was on board with it. So it's certainly something we can talk about, but it's something that requires a large majority in order to pass.
Okay, thank you. And I can see, I can see the dangers, because I know that the Vernon Library was a very expensive building. It's a gorgeous building, but, but quite expensive. And if we're all, if we're all partners in that, again, you know, that drives the inequity of the situation. Now, having said that, I also know that Summerland is coming forward for a, for a new library. So what would that program be? This will be an owned building also, then?
That's the idea that's under investigation right now, yeah. So it would be, I think in the neighborhood of $2 million building.
Okay.
Including land and so on.
And the Vernon building, what was that, that was 10 or 12, or?
I think ultimately, I think it was 11.
Okay.
But it was budgeted for more, it came in under budget by about $1 million.
Okay.
So, yeah, and so for Vernon, like, when you look at, if you look at this financial allocation model analysis, it's a snapshot of 2011. So Vernon's fine, I think they're even maybe underserved. But we anticipate when we do this again for 2013, 2014, we're going to have a significant misalignment in Vernon, and we're going to have to address it. And that's going to be one of my most difficult challenges, in a sense, because it's our busiest branch, it's a highly successful branch. So it's hard to say, okay, there's a lot of fat here, we can cut that. Some areas, it's a lot more clear what, what can be done, but we're going to have to work on it pretty fast, because in a larger center, like a Kelowna or Vernon, even a few percent becomes more important because of the dollar significance. In some cases, the dollar significance is really small, and then we're looking at taking immediate action where there's a larger misalignment. But there, we have to get going on it, even if it's 4% out, or something like that, because that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel McCourthoff, Ryan, please.
Thank you. When Counsel Ryan was talking about the vibrancy up in Oliver, fairly similar-sized towns, but there are three schools up there, that, four schools actually, that access that library. So that may throw some of the, of the numbers off. And I'm particularly concerned about the adult programming. I did go in after I saw that, that Oliver had way more adult programming than Osueus did. And I went in and talked to Kathy Burton here, and she said, her explanation was that in Osueus, they don't have coffee groups, or that type of thing, I think. And Oliver, what they do is invite some of the seniors, or anybody who wants to, to come in and have coffee at the library. Now, that happens once a week, or something like that. I'm, and there's nothing wrong with that, I think it's a great idea. My concern is, does that skew the numbers when you put it on a chart, that Osueus doesn't have that and Oliver does? Does that have anything to do with how many, how, how well the library is used? It sounds like it's more used as a social place, which is great, than taking out books and that type of thing. So I just think it's hard on a piece of paper to show exactly how things are being used, and for what purpose. And that can sometimes skew the, the numbers, that's all. And it could be with kids programming, too. Although I'm glad to see that, that the Osueus Library has, has increased their children's reading programs.
Yeah, I think when we look at Oliver, it's great, it's kind of great in a way to have Oliver in Osueus, you can look really quickly at one that's, that's pretty vibrant. So what we can do is figure, well, how did you build that? Because it doesn't happen overnight, it's a case of forming relationships with community groups, and I think Vicki involves her friends quite a bit, and I know the, the Osueus friends are great, they'd probably be willing to be involved a little bit more. So I think it's, we can learn from Oliver, and we can improve service here, just based on that model. But it's taken Vicki, Vicki White is their librarian, it's taken her a long time to build that. So we need to start where we are and build as well, so.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes, good, thank you. Yeah, just talking about buildings versus renting. Does the library not own the Kelowna branch?
No, we don't. And that is probably, well, undoubtedly, that's probably our most expensive facility. It costs us about 3/4 of a million dollars a year to rent that downtown branch, so we feel it.
Yes, indeed. Okay.
But, but then again, I mean, Kelowna probably accounts for about a third of our funding. So they're, it's costing us more, I mean, they're another one with high assessments as well. And what that does in the Kelowna context is it allows us to afford to have facilities there, because the cost is so much greater than in many other communities, so.
Yeah. Okay, that, no, it's good. I, I was under the impression that we did, although I, yeah.
I'm sad that we don't.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, it's well-positioned, and so on. But the, the Summerland one, I know, I guess, going back about almost five years now, it was, was, you know, always being talked about. And I was, I was never aware of whether there was any kind of a policy decision about renting versus owning. I mean, I, I take your point that sometimes you have to look at the market, and you have to look at, you know, what's available, and so on, and make a decision. But certainly, you know, it's just as well that it didn't happen earlier, because it seemed to be a boondoggle with, you know, the developer, and the, you know, all the legal issues and everything. So, but I, is, is the board still looking at, at, you know, weighing those, those alternatives carefully?
The board is looking at, hopefully, a single building that wouldn't be a strata of any kind, just a very simple, the way the O R L's been successful in some construction projects is to have a single occupant kind of facility. It just simplifies everything. The previous proposal was part of a huge complex of multiple people, and it just, it dragged on kind of for a long time, trying to figure out, can we get even the information we need to commit to this? So that's about as much as I can say, but the board is in conversation with Summerland about it. It's becoming a difficult issue, because it's been on the books for about 13 years. So we're doing our best to kind of expedite it if it's going to happen, but it requires board approval to do any large project like this. So far, the board has been indicating this is the direction they want us to go, and that's where we're at right now, so.
Anything further? Thank you very much, and best of wishes on your new direction and new initiative and new incentives. I really hope you, you can pull this off and affect some, some positive change. And I know, I know that's your goal, and best wishes on that, for sure.
Well, thank you so much, Your Worship and Members of Council. I'm very encouraged to see how interested all of you are in libraries, and how positive you are about how we can improve matters. It's really refreshing to me, and I think it reflects the literacy, kind of, the kind of population you've got here, that you're so concerned about literacy. It's been a treat to come, even though we got up at 5:00 in the morning. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Oh. I think that's it.
That's it.
That's it for this meeting. Motion to adjourn. Ryan Pott, all in favor? We'll take a break. We can roll into our in-camera right away.
Mm-hmm.